We'll call the meeting to order at seven and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments needed?
No, to me.
Approval of minutes from August 10th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from August 10th as written.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol, to approve the August 10th minutes. Changes or corrections needed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Jeff, you're an aye?
Yep.
Okay. Appointment with tenants for water shut-off agreement.
So per state statute, the town has to offer tenants of rental properties the opportunity to make an agreement with the Board of Selectmen before the town turns their water off. Everybody's received that information and this is their chance to come before the board. So I don't know if anybody's here for that.
Okay. We can come back if they come back, or they come to the meeting, we can come back to it.
Sure.
Everybody's fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
But at this point, there's no action taken yet? Are you looking for action one way or the other, Joe, when we do get to the...
It depends on what the tenants say. If somebody comes and asks for an agreement, then the board has that opportunity. If nobody shows up, there's really nothing to do.
All right, so let's just make sure we come back to that if need be. Five minutes for public comment. Anybody for public comment? Ray, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll not take up too much of your time. I'm talking about a two-and-a-half-year-old problem. I've met with Joe several times and he's been over to the road in front of my house, that 142 North Main. Not recently, but he's been there. Our house gets shaken. Walls are cracked. It's getting worse the last two or three years. When big, heavy trucks go by the manhole in front of it. Now, it's got to be heavy trucks. It's not little, you know, late night trucks or anything like that. It's the big ones. And it really has done a number on the house. I'll mention this again later before I leave. Not too much later. At one point, probably two, three years ago, we had the listers come to the house and they actually looked at the cracks. They told them what had happened. They told them the trucks were doing this when they hit the manhole. And the lister, you know, they didn't lower it a lot, but they lowered the freight value. We should amount to about a hundred dollars at that time. Anyway, we have had information that has not always been accurate and Joe suggested I call B Trans Amendment, which I did last week and talked to a veteran named Miss Dumbler, Miss Pak, P-A-K. Okay? And she said very clearly that where I live, North East Street, that is a Class 1 highway and that is a function of the town to take care of the roads, to meet problems with the roads, and not the state. Okay, so there was some confusion about that before I talked to her. I got it in writing. She called my house. We had a nice phone conversation. She also said, and Joe probably knows this, Joe, she said, "Want you to know that B Trans has grants of various kinds." Well, you know more about that than I do. So anyway, Class 1, the town is responsible. I didn't know because, you know, we see the fog go by, but that doesn't mean the deals aren't made to help each other. All I know is, when you think about going into West Street and Rutland, there used to be a bunch of potholes, like the one in front of my house. By the way, there's one, you found Norman Badness's, it's probably similar, which is the house, you know, the next manhole up. Anyway, going into West Street and Rutland, it used to be that way. Since they paved it and fixed it, I haven't... This is just going over the car. So apparently, some things can be done in some places. We paid about $2,000, actually more than that, a few months ago because we had a sewer plug. We were right at the start of the connection to the town. So we paid our share and the town paid their share. I want you to know I'm not, you know, a greedy person. I'm looking for a handout. But this has gone on and on and on. We've been in the house for 48 years and if I had a lawyer here, he or she would probably say, well, the listers helped you out the way they did, even though it was only about a hundred bucks. That basically adds to my case that it's a town problem and not a state problem or not my problem. Now, Joe says it is not the manhole. I assume he speaks about this for himself or first town group. I mean, I'll leave that up to Joe to address. Well, my question is my wife's, and she's furious. She is furious. And I haven't been able to solve this for two-and-a-half years. Nobody is telling us who can tell us what the problem is. In other words, I don't expect any of you to be magicians, but somebody's got to tell us what's the problem. We say it's the manhole because if no truck hits the manhole, the house wouldn't shake. But I'm no expert. I'm not an engineer. And if your driver's patty, we're afraid the value of the house is not going to go up. That's for sure. When people see the cracks, I remember your listers took pictures when they were at the house. Two of the listers, one was sick, as you probably know. So anyway, Class 1 highway, town's responsibility. I'm aware of your winter, the selectmen's winter advisory on pipes, closing pipes. You've done that more than just this year. That if it's a problem between the road and the house, it's a homeowner's problem. For instance, but I would just say I pay $2,000, exactly $2,200, to get the plug out on my part. But this is, whatever it is, we're starting at the manhole. And I'm not, I don't think Joe's an expert on manholes, so I'm not calling him for that. But somebody's got to be the expert. Again, I don't know, I don't expect you folks to be the experts. I just want somebody to help us out and fix it.
Ray, do you know when that was last paved through there? Do you remember at all?
Well, I don't, and I did ask, Joe, when did we decide it's going to be paved again?
Because that was my, like, I thought it was on the schedule for repaving.
It says 2024.
2024 is when...
2024. Now, again, this is your issue, not mine, as to who does it, okay? Because, again, the lady in Lyndon was saying, "You've got to pave it." I'm not sure the town is...
I'm not sure how it exactly works, funding, but I believe the state is going to be paving. Joe knows exactly where, but...
Well, see, and that's part of the confusion.
Correct.
Who's responsible for that hole? Who's responsible for that problem? Or at least, who can help me with my problem? And nobody seems to, I mean, I thought, I thought the lady I talked with might say, "Well, why don't you call, you know, Joe Lowell, who's the engineer or something?" But she didn't, and I'm not insulting her. She was very nice.
Has there been times over the last two or three years when you've been having the trouble? Have there been times when the manhole hasn't been a problem? Like, have we done different things? Have we done something different? Like, we're not covering it with asphalt or...
No, I got to tell you, in response to that, just recently, somebody, state or town, you can tell me, "What's the stripe in the middle?" Whoever did it, I think, put it a little closer to the manhole so that not as many times as that truck hit it. It still hits it, though. No, maybe it's just a matter of a couple inches. But it seems to me, with my bad eyes, that it's a little closer, which I'm not complaining about. It's good. But no, no, nothing has been done. And, you know, I've had many people tell me those things align with bricks. The bricks fall apart and then they get loose and the pipes therefore shake. But apparently, your folks are saying my trucks are fine. I've been to four town managers, three anyway. The acting town manager, who was the town manager, Bolton, Jonas Rosenfeld. But it was just before he left. It was wintertime. He said, "Ray, maybe you give the town can get a rubber thing and put it over the manhole, under the manhole." Well, whoever I talked with since then said, "No." I talked to her. Her wasn't. Who's the town manager? He was no help. I mean, he just wasn't. I wasn't. That's all I said. So I keep coming back and my wife's ready to divorce me. Because I'm usually able to handle problems like this.
John has some helpful comments, maybe.
I would suggest that the DPW go up there and inspect that manhole and see what's coming.
Didn't they just do that when they fixed the sewer?
They go up there, you can watch.
He didn't hear.
John, I don't think Ray heard. Did you hear?
I didn't hear him because of the air conditioning.
His suggestion is that DPW goes up and does a thorough inspection of the manhole down into the structure. I don't know...
Fairhaven?
The Fairhaven DPW.
Yeah, okay.
Joe had a response. I don't know what it was.
He's not going to respond to that because I don't, he's had some of his people look at it. Not recently, but...
We, I will start by saying we can have DPW inspect the manhole. With that said, though, they were just there when the sewer line was plugged and they did look in. And all three of the manholes in front of Mr. Pankowski's house have been rebuilt within the last two years because of the complaint of house shaking. We've spent a little more than $6,000 to rebuild manholes in an attempt to stop the shaking. Nothing we do will stop that shaking.
He did tell me that he doesn't, that he doesn't, he didn't tell me that it's the manhole, but they won't tell me what it is because they don't know. Right, Joe? I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I mean, I need someone to tell me what it is so that we can get it fixed. And it doesn't have, it's got to be, I'm saying, I'm a layman. It's got to be the manhole because that's what the guts go. Nobody else is helping shake any pipes or anything. We just need help. I...
Is there other options, Joe, that you can think of? I mean...
From the town's perspective, it's not, it's not the manholes, Ray. I'm sorry. It's not the road. If I, if it was my house, I would probably get a builder to come in and ask a builder what you can do to repair your home. Because it's a homeowner issue. It's not a town road issue.
But, but I understand what you're saying, but repairing the home is just going to, it's not going to do it. It's not going to stop the noise and the shaking.
Do you know if other homeowners, nearby homeowners have similar...
I can tell you that I haven't done, I probably should have done more of this.
Yeah.
Norman Badness says that when you go by his house, the dishes rattle. Directly across from me, we have a fairly new resident, Steve Elias, a Christian. And he said that his house shakes a little bit too. But I don't want to put words in their mouth and say that theirs is, walls are cracked like my own.
I mean, sometimes in my house, we do get shaking, not to, not what you're saying, but it is...
This is every time a large truck goes over the manhole. That's my issue. I mean, and I'm not saying that Joe is not telling the truth when he says that the manhole, according to his people, looks good or whatever, or is in good shape. But somehow, it's got to be some kind of connection between that truck going over and my house.
I mean, unless the board, any other board members have questions, I mean...
I have a question.
Hold on just a second. I mean, I'd be glad to work with Joe, see if there's anything else that we can do and look at and meet with you on site and make a look at it with you. I mean, I don't know.
Did we pave over those manholes?
We don't, you can ask yourself, if it was your house, where would you go to get help?
Well, that's, I mean, I'm trying to figure out a plan to get you some help, but we got to, you know, I don't know...
But you're free to look at it anyway.
Glenn and I could come down with the town manager, Glenn and Rod. It can't be three of us, but two of us could come down and take a look and just go over with it and see where, if anything else jumps out.
Definitely look at it.
It's a starting point, I think, that...
Good thought, I think.
I mean, the last thing I want to do is get a lawyer involved, but I am frustrated. And I don't talk lawyers, seriously. I am just so frustrated. This is my home for 48 years, well, actually 50 years, because we rented it in town before we bought the house.
Yeah. Go, go ahead.
What is the speed limit on that road?
30.
Okay, and what is the speed limit that the trucks are going?
That's...
That's a question for Bill behind.
That matters.
So the easy way to do that math, mathematically, is if you ever get to meet, you do telephone poles and you time the trucks going from pole to pole. It will tell you the speed that they're going at. It may be 30 and may need to go down to 25 based on the pounds of the truck that will slow down or speed bumps to slow them down. But the impact of what you're saying is based on poundage on the road. These roads are not built or conducive for 18 years, 16 years. Trust me, I know. So that plays into it because it is a town road. It's not a commercial road.
Yeah, I remember a few years ago, they changed it. They made the trucks go down the water just a little. I'm not asking for that.
Yeah, but it's something to consider when the speed.
So I mean, if, I don't know, I'm not going to volunteer people. You can volunteer if you want to do it, but I mean, I'm glad to meet with Glenn or Rod or anybody and just...
I'm not an expert on manholes, nowhere near. That's why my question of whether you had me, if it was good or not. I noticed when I drive around, some of our manholes seem to shift a little bit here. And I didn't know if you paved, I know you have to, our highway group probably doesn't like the idea of having to chip out asphalt to get out a manhole cover when they need to service it. But if we've got, but if we've got a severe problem with a manhole and the solution might be just paving over the top because of the weather or stuff. But if paving over the top and I still get the weight of the trucks are still causing the problem, I've just made life miserable for the DPW. So I don't, I don't know. Be more than willing to look at it, but I don't know what I could, John, you...
They have a rubber ring to go between the color and process.
So I, I guess, Ray, I don't know the details behind it. I'd be glad to, Jeff wants to make comment too, but I'd be glad to get together with somebody and go down and take a look and just see if we can see what's going on for you.
Okay, see what you can do because I just don't know where to go. I just don't know where to go.
Jeff, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, well, if Aaron was up there, what was Aaron's recommendation?
I talked, so this has been a conversation with both Sam and Aaron and Nate. We're, I'm just, I'm just going to repeat what those three gentlemen have said, who are the experts. The manhole is not the problem. What we've done is we've rebuilt those manholes, all three of them. We recently inspected the one that we're talking about tonight. Previously, we did have tar over all three manholes, which didn't fix the problem. We took the tar off to inspect the sewer. That didn't fix the problem. The manhole, we can talk about rubber rings and tar and not tar and bricks, but the manhole is not the problem. To keep throwing money at it is a waste of taxpayer money because that is not the problem.
Yeah. What I'm, what I'm hearing, though, and I mean it respectfully, is they're saying, we have our group that keeps, that are our experts that are saying it's not the problem. If I was Mr. Pankowski, I'd be asking for a second opinion because maybe there's some people who have, who work with manholes more than we do who have solutions that we hadn't even talked about. And, and I'm not looking to throw good money away from bad situations, but obviously, we've got a situation that what we've tried doesn't appear to be, if it's the manhole, and I stand, I know we can, we can talk about whether, whether the trucks hitting the manhole is, is the issue or not forever. But it's, it seems like doing nothing is not, there's still a problem when the problem hasn't been fixed.
I'm not sure if the state would be amicable to this, but do they have a road engineer that they could lend us to, and I'm talking about as a road engineer. It's more than just manhole. It's the road.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I forgot to tell you one thing that the lady in Lyndon said. She said that, she told my wife, not me, but she told my wife, who caused her one of the previous situations, you know, we're trying to get this solved, that this happens all over the state. My kind of problem. That doesn't help me.
Right.
So we can, I can get an engineer to look at this. I can get an engineer to look at this. It might cost us a few thousand bucks, but I can get somebody to take a look.
A state engineer or a private sector?
I could find, I'd be a private engineer.
I mean, my only suggestion was I want to see it first. I mean, I don't want to spend money if we go down there and it, I know we have our experts, but it's at the board level now, so I kind of want to add more information on...
Can I tell my wife that you might hire an engineer after you look at it?
Yeah.
Yep, we'll go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Well, good luck.
Thank you, Rick. Linda?
Okay, so the fencing is almost completely done for the dog park. I think they just need latches for the gates. And I approached Joe because we have Brian Reed has made a big wooden frame for our road side. So anyway, where we could put it, and he said, "Don't bother the board and just come up with ideas." So I thought on the corner and that was decided, know that that would work. And Joe suggested the west side, the west side of the, okay, the west side across from the dog park. The problem is the gates. And took the picture today of, this is the gate that's up, the stone, whatever. So, and this is the other side at the dog park. It just, I'm saying, it looks really bad. It's not a good entrance to the dog park. And this was designed in that spot without the gauge and stuff. So what we want to ask is what we can, what we can do because we had said, well, you know, maybe they may want the gate down the road, although I remember hearing it said that the gate was never to be locked. So if the gate's never locked, my thought was, why couldn't those yellow gates be taken down, stored, if they decide at some point they're going to start locking them again, they would have them. But it just, it looks really bad and we're going to, we're trying really hard to make the dog park look nice.
So in the spirit of what Linda is saying, I went online and looked at, like, the town has been working so diligently on, as giving the town a facelift, promoting more businesses and tourism into the, I believe that study was done with...
Two boys in Kansas.
Thank you. I'm also really sure. And so a lot of time, money and effort has been put into that to revitalize the town. So the dog park is part of what we can offer tourists that come in, people who stay. Everybody brings their dogs with them. So it's a, it's a nice feature to have publicized at the inns or the hotels or in addition to that, if that dog park will be featured on the state's website of dog parks around. So what I did is I took your revitalization plan and I put in your, your mission, which is beautiful, I really define this 100%, of enhancing the community. And then also, you know, a couple of little verbiages. But my question is, why do we want to display this dog park in this fashion? It doesn't go with your mission. It doesn't go with my mission as a homeowner and a taxpayer. So we want to enhance, we want to invite, we want to make this eye appealing. But we want to do it in a way that's cost-effective. This is the website that the state has presently, so it has every town that has a dog park listed. So when people want to come and visit the state, they can hope to see where they're staying. Is there a dog park? Then, here's the picture of, so there are some suggestions of what we can do. It's not expensive. That could be a win-win for the plane people, the dog park, people who snowshoe through there like I do. It's beautiful property. So you can replace the gate with a large one that will go all the way across, made of wood. You can put pictures of dogs and planes on it, have it be eye appealing. Or you can take this post that's here and put a chain link and put signs on here. No four-wheel, wall-turning vehicles allowed beyond this point because it's wetlands. Or you can just remove the gate and leave the area open. It's totally up to you. But it doesn't have to be an expensive fix, but it needs to be a fix. And so I've made copies for each of you to have to look. I would like to ask that you get back to us. I don't know who will let Linda know of your decision.
I think Joe's the one that we've had that's been working.
Yeah.
And how much time will you need to review the information and get back to Linda on your decision?
We've just been hanging up Brian about installing it and I don't want him to install it yet, you know, that's not going to work, with the plant there and the town and everything.
I understand.
Yeah. I mean, I was just up there. I drove up there before the meeting. It looks, it looks great up there. The fence looks nice. And I would agree, the first thing you see is a radial fence.
Yeah, it's not supposed to ever be locked, so it's...
Well, it's Munger Road that's not supposed to be...
See, there's two things we, right, the Munger Road...
It's the Munger Road to the right.
That is, that shouldn't be gated. If it's Class 4 road, it shouldn't be gated.
It's never closed, but if we need to at some point in time, it would be nice to have a gate there. I mean...
And if we remove the gate, then there's, because it's wetlands, we'll have to get permits to put it back.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah, I don't know that. That's...
But you can also enhance...
Existing.
Yeah.
Maybe we get something a little more, I like your idea, a little more eye appealing.
Yes, thank you. Oh, that way, yes.
So I mean, because it's public comment, obviously, we can't make a decision tonight, but I'd be glad to put it on the agenda for the next meeting and get some feedback from Joe on, I know you guys have been working together, so I want to make sure that Joe's opinion is also definitely involved in the process.
Well, Joe, unless you want to excuse yourself, I totally understand.
It'll be the joyous day when the dog park...
Hey, it's been a long run, but it looks really good up there.
The fence is in, we've got our pool stations, we're putting... Stations are in, the benches are on the way.
I mean, I looked, when I was looking up there, I'm like, I know we wanted, some folks wanted it closer to the pavilion. I think it's, where it is, is actually okay.
I was also looking for you because my pet peeve is that big pile of millings up there that looks terrible that you have to...
Oh, we don't want to talk about that because we know what's happening.
I mean, but I, I mean, it's one step at a, it's a one step at a time, but eventually, that big pile of millings is not going to be there.
I'd like to go in there and dig it up from our yours. Never mind. Well, thank you for your time and for your consideration. Have a good night. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
And that'll give me more time to dig up more dirt.
There's a lot of it up there. There's a lot of it up there. Anybody, anybody else for public comment? Sure, your five minutes was a little off on that one.
Something's locked up apparently.
Uh, department head report, uh, let's start with the police chief.
Sorry, we're in here last week, police always have their... Um, just want to start in Las Guten, so we have four arrests, we had one for simple assault. Hunter DLS, we had a DUI and a DLS, that subject was arrested and processed, released into custody of his friend. Got mad at his friend because he wasn't getting to the hospital soon enough to get an independent blood draw. Said, "Get out, I'm driving," got stopped by the state police, got arrested again for DUI. Sunday night I got called out, um, 4:30 in the morning down here on West Street for intoxicated person. I got there, truck's running on the radio, it's cranking, I couldn't find him, I was sleeping on the back of the truck. Dragged him off from his truck, another 35 or 40 minutes trying to negotiate to go to bed. After my health backup, I was thankful that Capitol Hill got called out also. I would have been by myself, we have actually had some support, so... As far as the dog park around here, I would like to, once it's done, to have the board revisit park slash records. We have to include the dog park area, um, similar to like the park, so if we modify the, the playground in the park and give us some hunter's families and digging and the same kind of stuff we do for the park, I'd like to address that. Um, finger print machine, finger print machine came today, they dropped it out at 3:30 out back. It's heavier than two help gloves, we can't just get it in the building. They called there, he came back, nice Joe helping him out. So that is in the building, it's not booked up obviously, but it's here. The radios got put in cars, I think they did for last meeting. The bill went in, so once the second half of the radio gets paid, and I get the invoice and the check back, and then I'll submit the billing for the other half of the radios for the department's home security. And then the same thing with the finger print machine, I haven't got the invoice, I think over two weeks from now, you guys will authorize payment. I think we'll have the bill from that. We do get an extension because it was supposed to be by the 31st of this month, but it's here, it gives a... That's in 31st February or 22nd. But that, again, rest doesn't matter, everything's here, we just have to get it paid and get it installed. Just want to go back quick to the Capitol Hill and North Street intersection. I still recommend that maybe we will try and take that offering up. I went up there again, and I've been here 23 years, and I really got a look in it, there's a couple driveways that are right there. Do think, I don't know who, if it's our responsibility or towns, but I know we talked about it. It's over my head to do a project like that, but I wanted to kick it back. Maybe we should look at expanding the, get rid of the triangle, maybe grass it or whatever we can do and make it so it's a right-hand turn. Market intersection, just the, I really think it'll help with the residents that live there because people, I think I'm guilty of it sometimes, come around the corner, feel that you're getting on a hump ramp while that's a free and you... Just want to bring that back to the forefront. Um, I am aware of the continued problems in the park with littering, animals, and the head traffic, the staff's starting to patrol there. I know they spent here four, 30 minutes last meeting, but if there's people in the car, park the car, you know, if you're not doing something. They'll probably have a lot of time, you're one person on the car, be every 30 minutes. One other thing is they haven't done an official press release, but over the last, starting in October and November of 2020, if you've noticed on those monthly reports that I put out, school control, you know, I mean, you need, I mean, I need, we have to have one apartment, there was a lot of traffic. We started camping out in the apartments, so they'll take a newspaper and hang out front of the door. So we started doing that. So in March, I got exhausted, I called the drug task force and said, "You've exhausted all the resources that we had." We're out within one week, um, they ended up with an investigation. Um, I complained with that subject, it has been evicted and moved, but they arrested him yesterday and he got indicted and sentenced. I picked up yesterday, we're on our way over here. And that's the first puzzle piece, so now I think everything else has started falling into place. Most of the official press release, I'll try to provide a boost and see it in the paper before I can actually, uh, who is... That's the first chess piece in more arrests like opening, that's what I think they call it, like I said, going on since March, official. Sorry, the state, the state police drug task force are amazing, I mean, off to their current estimate. I mean, one week they have set out that they were here, which is usually, because they're spread out pretty thin off these neighborhoods. Um, I think that's all we have.
Is there any update to the armed robbery at the convenience store that you can share?
I think there is a solid one.
And you... Uh, questions from the board? Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
You want to do DPW, Joe, first?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, DPW, they finally got the roadside mowing done. We didn't up, we did end up having to rent that tractor and, uh, kind of hammer that out. Uh, the guys are also grading, they got most of the small roads done, uh, they're going to continue, fall grading is to start in September, so they're a little bit ahead on that. Uh, if you're on Furnace Street, you'll see they're dropping dry wells in on Furnace, uh, for the paving, which will happen in the spring. Um, because of all the rain, our pavers have been delayed.
Were those folks, sorry, were, were they notified, the first street residents, it's been delayed?
Not yet, we just learned, uh, yesterday, so, but we'll send a... Yeah, so the Pike is, Pike is our, is the paving company, and they were supposed to be here in the middle of September. They backed it out and said the end of September, um, which to me just means the middle of October because they're so behind. Our contract does say no later than September 15th will we do paving, so we're well within our contract contractual rights, uh, to put this off. And we might get a better deal, early spring paving, you tend to do a little better than you do late.
But you'll be able to bid it back out again?
Uh...
Where you keep the existing?
No, so Pike, we did a three-year contract with Pike last year, so Pike will have, they have this paving season and then the next paving season it goes back out.
At market price, right?
Yep. Uh, crosswalks, there's still a few crosswalks out there, um, they got the, they were testing the painter out today, they'll be out tomorrow finishing up the, uh, striping around the schools and just the little bits that didn't get done. Uh, for water, they're still keeping an eye on that intake tunnel. Not a lot of change, but it's something that we're monitoring, uh, just to, just to be sure nothing does change, knock on wood. Um, and for the water system, uh, the guys are pulling together a capital, capital improvement program for that, for the, for the plant, uh, as well as the distribution system. Uh, we did a study back in, I think it was 2015, uh, for some of the distribution downtown Fairhaven. And with the class one paving coming up in a couple of years, now would be the time to get that done instead of letting it fail in 16 years. Because this stuff is so old, it's, it's time.
Joe, don't, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Don't we have a, uh, a plan for water lines that need replacement from Aldridge and Elliot?
Yes.
Can we tell you all that information?
Yes, that's where the plan is coming from.
Okay, perfect.
Um, he is, uh, so I talked to Aaron about that today, in fact, about that report. Uh, it's a little, it's a little outdated, so he's reached out to the principal engineer at A and E, and they're going to get us some updated numbers to see what that looks like. Moving on, the wastewater plant, that project is, is coming along, uh, and going pretty smoothly, uh, as compared to the size of it. So we're appreciative of that. Academy Street Pump Station, um, that control panel has been changed, we're still waiting for the generator to show up and that will, that will finish that project. Uh, and the Atom Street, uh, control panel for that pump station is here and they're putting the upgrade in now. So those, knock on wood, will be done soon. That's what I got for DPW. Chief, chief, can I ask you to talk about 911? Because I know Carol asked about the 911 calls last, uh, last meeting.
911 calls or...
So when you get cell phone calls for 911 and they bounce over to Washington County, there's many concerns about the five, uh, it's not five or six, but multiple transfers from Washington County dispatch to another dispatch, to another dispatch, and then you finally get to, and that just people are just frustrated that they have to explain theirselves every step. Is there anything?
I have no control over that, we have regional, um, public safety answer points.
Yeah.
And that's what's out, out around, so you might call here and get Washington County, which you bounce out, Bat Tower, Washington County, which is, which emergency it's so and so in Vermont. I'll stand by, they transfer you over to, to, well, it could be Rutland, it might, it might be a Westminster or it might bounce up to, to Williston. I don't know where it goes, or there's a 911 answer. The problem is it, it's, they just bounce it around, you might get Hartford sometime because they're the next one, everybody else is busy, you'll get the Hartford. Police Department has its own pizza or shell, it was like four in the state, and there's no way to make it better.
Is there a direct line number that folks can call?
Other than 911?
Other than 911 to...
Well, you go with a, like, for us, a 265-4531.
Yes, that's where I call.
And what that does is that goes to Westminster and then, what I tried to explain to Joe, same with our call box. So if you hit the call box and we don't answer it inside...
Yep.
It gets, it call forwards to 773-911 and it goes to, supposed to go ring in...
To get all that?
But if the Rutland dispatcher is not available, because they're on the line call, the guy sitting next to him is assigned to say, Rocky, boy, I'm there. State police or whatever, what's your issue? I'm looking, I'm at the fair, I'm looking to speak to them, I'll stand by, wait at home for a minute, then they're going to kick you over back to the Rutland one when they're not busy. So it's just the way they've designed consolidation from that.
Not very safe.
It's not very good. But that's the problem with when you're down to two...
So the best bet is still to call 911.
For an emergency, yes.
For an emergency, but they could also call your direct number.
Well, it's gonna, if it's an emergency, I'd still do the 911.
Correct, yes.
It's an emergency, but not an all-out, like, big fireplace rescue right now.
Yep.
It's an emergency or non-emergency, I guess the 4531 number.
Cool.
That's still, you still may go through the same process.
Yep.
The only thing that we're working on now, it may help a little bit, but that's before in the office, is with the new phone system coming to the town.
Yep.
The 4531 will act like a call box, so it's going to bring, we wanted to change it, um, to bring in our office first. So if you're in the station or the station is banned by the court for today, they'll fill the 4531 numbers, um, when they're there and then after certain rings, that, that'll call forward to Rutland. And that's in an effort to goes back to the dispatch piece, but then talking about charging, we're taking every effort that we can to, some of those calls, 4531, will be added to the train. That's really tying up dispatch, dispatch starts a case and says, John, don't call about catastrophe, West Street, blah, 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 blah. And they dispatch us to us, so a larger piece of that is we've pushed back on them, don't start a case for us, we just are, um, trying to...
Yep.
Perfect world, 8293, if it's non-emergency, you can call the office, that's the correct line. If we're not there, you get like, um, 4531, it's like both the call box and the three dispatch. I know it's a lot of information.
She's got it, Claire's got it.
No, I'm not trying to write this down, I'm just learning, I'm walking at 6 o'clock in the morning on the south side of the cemetery.
Yeah.
And whenever I get attacked by a bear or I fall down, break a leg, there's no way to get help.
Well, the minute you, here's the other deal, the minute you call 911, you can call 911 and hang up, even if it's a cell phone with a new technology.
They'll track it.
They can handle it to say, "We got a 911 open line and it's on Cemetery Street near the intersection of Pleasant Street." It'll get us within radius.
I, I understand that, but I mean, you know, a girl could die, we...
No, I mean, it's possible.
It's just so...
And then it does, does go the other way with the fire department, because if you call the 4531 for a fire, they're going to say, "Stand by, transfer you to Washington County," because Washington County dispatches the fire department on this side of the county.
Yeah.
So there is no perfect world on making that better.
All right. It's clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
No, I mean, it, it's an explanation, consolidation definitely has seemed to, yeah. All right, thank you. Uh, town manager report?
Yep. Uh, so very quickly, uh, to let the board know, our budget process has started here in the office. Uh, the board of selectmen will get their first look at the proposed budget in October. Uh, at the next, in two meetings, um, I'm going to bring a proposal to try to shake loose these last 40 water meters that people are refusing to let us, let us into the homes in the place. Uh, paving we talked about, that's been canceled. The patch job though, still talking about paving, uh, Aaron's reached out to a couple of vendors to get that, uh, get that done uh, in sooner rather than in the spring.
What, do we also have the option of we do it?
I'm going to say no. And I say that because, yes, we do have the equipment and our guys do a lot of things pretty good, but we're not pavers. What I imagine happening, Rod, is that we go out there with all, with the roller and we compact it and we roll it and then we're just going to get beat up for the next 20 years because look at what a crappy job they did out there. And I can't see it going any other way besides that. I mean...
You can't go through life not doing things because you're afraid of the outcome.
I'm not afraid of the outcome, I just...
Yes, you are, you just said you are.
I'm certain of the outcome, it's, 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 it will be a complaint that I'll have to deal with from now until I retire in 16 years.
So, well...
Shouldn't be that hard to fix those.
We do a lot of things really well, that's not something I'm confident that we'll do really well, right in the middle of some fresh paving.
We'll, we'll never be able to do it if we never get any experience doing it.
I, I'm not...
So, I mean, we're talking about the outs, the, the out-of-pocket cost to doing it, or if we had to redo it, is the cost of the hot mix, correct? I mean, we, the, the labor is, the labor is...
Some cost.
It's some cost. I, and I, I understand that there's a scheduling issue, it's not quite as easy as just snapping your fingers, but, you know, uh, if, if we, if we do our, our best, uh, and we, we go through the, the right process, we ought to be able to do, and we're not paving across the, uh, uh, an entire street, I mean, I, I understand that we can't do that, but we're just patching a, a, a spot that has been compacted fairly well over the last few weeks. Okay, so compaction really shouldn't be a big issue. Uh, so I would still request that we consider doing that ourselves. I mean, we have the equipment, it's hard to tell the voters that we have the equipment, but we just chose not to do that.
So, and I mostly agree with you. And we do do paving, we do do paving on some of the smaller roads on the back, on the back sides of town. In the busiest intersection of town where we just laid down fresh pavement last year, it is not advisable for it to have our guys do that. It's, it's the busiest intersection, it's freshly paved. We do pave elsewhere, but in that particular spot, it's, it's not, it's not a good idea. I really am not in favor of that at all. Paving, patch job, uh, two tax sales were left, we finished those up today. Um, we sold two properties, uh, one on Prospect and then one on, oh, Grape Street. Uh, so we're going to be moving forward, those have one, those, both of those properties have one-year redemptions, um, but we're going to move forward and start selling more properties. Uh, we have a few people that are behind on their taxes.
Did they, um, go for just back taxes or was there any...
No.
...contentness to them?
It was remarkable. Um, so the one on Grape Street went for 5,600, um, back taxes were 4,500, including water.
Yep.
Uh, the one on Prospect owed $2,500 and that went for 36,500. There was quite a, a bidding war for that particular property. I've never seen that many bids. Uh, Town Hall renovation, that was kind of stalled. Um, I went and met with the contractor, the engineer and the contractor last week, um, they looked at... Um, they looked at me and said, well, why aren't we doing it? And I said, I don't know. So we have more than enough money. Uh, they're bringing me a schedule to, uh, construction schedule at the end of this week. They're, they're getting their, uh, subs ready, and they're gonna see what we can do. Costs have come down on a few things, so we should be, uh, good to go.
Who was the contractor?
Oh my gosh.
The guy out of Rutland, right there by the cleaners in the police department.
Alright, alright, just.
It'll come to me.
That's fine.
So, so we now, just wanna make sure I heard that right, uh, because two weeks ago, we were talking about scaling back the project.
That was before I, yeah, that's what I went into this conversation with, was, hey, what are we gonna, what are we gonna cut out to get it done? Um, and they came back with, well, we should just do this because you have the money. Again, costs came down, they did some, uh, they did some adjustments instead of using, uh, wood in places that use steel and then vice versa to, to make it more cost-effective. So that's, yeah, no, I was, I was pretty excited. Um, and, um, we got, we got a lot of good feedback about our, our summer rec program, and I wanted to say, uh, Hunter, Buxton, and Nicole Rice did a wonderful job. Everybody I talked to this year was, they were just thrilled with what, uh, what the kids could do. Um, the level of supervision, just, uh, top to bottom, they did a great job managing. And then the, the kids, the high school kids that helped out too, they did a wonderful job, so we wanna say thank you to them. And that, what I got?
Yeah, questions for Joe? Jeff, anything from your end? Can't see ya.
Um, just can you give us a, tell them what that paving's gonna cost before it actually happens?
Yes.
Good. Anything else, Jeff?
That's it.
Alright. Um, old business, uh, CNC fireworks permit.
The owners of CNC came in a couple of weeks ago and requested a permit to sell fireworks in the town of Fairhaven. Uh, I did reach out to a couple of towns and got examples of, um, permits that the town can use for this purpose. And I ran the permit through our legal, uh, through our lawyers to make sure it was kosher. In your packets, you have a copy of that. Um, the lawyers did make minor changes, but they were grammatical. You know, put an A instead of an an, and a period instead of a colon.
Well, they, they missed a few.
It's, you have the one that, the, this is the one they fixed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, there's a couple of titles in there.
So they've been corrected?
Yeah. And I do believe CNC is here.
Yep.
Have you seen a copy of the?
No.
Ooh, questions from the board? Jeff, anything from your end?
Uh, what's the, what's the permit look like, uh, for a purchase? Like, don't, uh, don't public, uh, you know, general public, don't they need a permit to buy from there?
They do, and there's a municipal, there's a municipal permit that we do use, that, uh, the fire chief does have, uh, have copies of, and he issues those.
Okay, it's gonna be the same as like an outdoor burn permit?
It's a fireworks permit.
Oh, and will they specifically fire, okay.
Yeah, and it's something we've been using since I don't know when.
Okay.
My, my only comment is, so, we're looking at what a, this permit would look like. Um, since our last meeting, when we talked about this the first time, on Facebook, it got a little bit of action, of people talking for and against, and, uh, I, I would come away with saying we got probably just as many against as we have for. It didn't seem overwhelmingly one way or another on there, so I'd ask the question of, uh, would we be making a decision on this or doing some kind of, giving folks a chance to come in and weigh in? What's the?
I, I was gonna suggest a public hearing on it because it's new to the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I have heard a mixed bag of reactions to it. You know, there definitely isn't one, yeah, 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 there's not one. It's really a mixed, um, I think some of the taxpayers have questions. Uh, I think a public meeting. I mean, you guys are, when did you say we're hoping to start up?
In, in spring.
In the spring, so I mean, it.
There's plenty of time.
There's time, and I wanna do it, I wanna do it right.
I mean, there's, there's gonna be pros and cons.
No, for sure.
I mean, and, and like I said before, the first year, uh, we had a little rough going in, called Pittsburgh at all. Um, with the first year, it, it was rough.
Yeah.
And then we decided that we, for Pittsburgh residents, we had to have a permit for a Pittsburgh resident.
Yeah.
Um, and in the last four years, the fire chief, the police chief, they've all praised the vote. They haven't had one complaint. One complaint. And if it's run right, it's, it, it can, it can work, is what I'm saying. It can.
And I just wanna give people the opportunity to ask those questions. I mean, Facebook is, you know, Facebook is what it is, but come to a public meeting and actually ask those questions and get, get some answers. And I think we have time. It's not.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It's not interfering on the, the timeframe for you guys.
Right.
So, and I.
Well, we, I will be honest.
Yep.
Uh, number eight, that's, that's not even, that's not even a consideration. It's not even, we, both, uh, we pride ourselves in donating thousands of bucks a year to the fire department, which we be selling out of. That's a donation, it almost feels like a donation. We're not asking for you guys to give us a tax break. We're not asking for a sidewalk for us. We're not asking for a building. We're not asking for anything other than permission. So, that's, that's a tactic, what I think. That's.
No, I.
Open, I'm just telling you that, that is.
No, that's fine.
I pay a lot of money to.
This is our first review too as a board. I mean, we're seeing the first draft, so.
I mean, by the time you pay rent and you pay, buy your product and you buy, I mean, anybody in business knows it.
Yeah.
You know, if you look.
That's a huge thing. I mean, even if the rest of it, then you all, I would, I would say thank you very much for the consideration, uh, but.
But I mean, that's, so that's the first draft for sure.
Yeah.
I would say, obviously, you've just seen it, so review it.
Review it.
If you have questions, definitely get back to Joe. Um, unless others have different opinion, I'd like to schedule a public hearing on it and.
Right.
Absolutely. Good luck with the vote.
So you guys can get the questions and answer them. I mean, that's.
That'd be great.
That's fair to you guys. I think the board is supportive of that.
And I will say, the police chief, we would, we will thank him if he stands behind this because it's gonna be a little extra work for him the first year.
It needs to be like now. Sure, right, yes, right.
But I'm just saying.
My only concern would be like, because you're here, if the local, there'd be more locals, like now we might get two a year. Like, it's you being here, and now we're doing fifty permits, which is gonna add more on the menu. And then I'm thinking if we have a part-time fire chief, we're gonna take it on, on the locals, possibly. That would be.
Well, and it's, it's town, in that regard, the town can limit how many fire permits they allow to tell me. If it's randomly out of thin air tap, or the town can permit, you know, can stay in, and private residences letting them off the, or, or, whatever that number is, but it is the town that, like, ultimately. And we can sell without someone having a permit handed from the town of Fairhaven, especially if this is the town's random. And I told you that no matter what Bush, uh, and then come up with this winter to supposedly, uh, straighten itself and make it more of a legitimate marketplace than it was before. Uh, we would still, because being here, it runs a lot slower than Pittsburgh.
How's that work if you have somebody from Anthony, New York moves over and buys them from them? Do they have to get a permit?
So, no, no. Uh, and that's an out-of-state sale, so, so we, those sales have been out, that, that marketplace has been open for four years since North Star's been selling out. So what, what the Supreme Court did in their decision, they only spoke about Vermont sales, meaning the permit. Which, they didn't change a lot, they just interpreted it a lot this way, that it's been the same for four years. So it's not that they came up with new, uh, wording, it's the same exact wording.
New, free water ID.
Ask you for their ID. Ask where you guys come up, it starts where you're coming from, hey, where you guys gonna be shooting these off, uh, if it's out of state. It's always, hey, uh, oh, can I say your name? Yeah, of course. That's, that's the magic word to us, is you show us out-of-state ID, no issue. So. We have, there will be more local people asking because they will have fights out of state open, and, you know, they'll wanna come in and see new business and, uh, but if this, and especially, this could all be changed, the wording, and, and this winter, if they come up with a different, so like our Pittsburgh, our Pittsburgh permit just says that we're gonna follow all state. That's our old guidance. And, and again, it's not ETF regulated, so there is no ETF storage, there's no ETF on sales, there's no ETF on any, it's not, uh, regulated, uh, materials that we're talking about.
Bill?
What are you looking at doing? To be honest. So that, since Pittsburgh is not a 24-hour department, we are not a 24-hour department, we try to act that way.
This was, this was one of my concerns. Uh, first meeting was that one of the locations we're looking at is more in-town, and one of the other ones is, you know, out. They are, they are, uh, steel containers. They have giant, they're expensive. It would be easier to cut through the side of it than to try to cut through blocks of it. But then I tell people what kind of mean that, because they're gonna try to fire torch into a. By their store. So that is, uh, because we have no.
There's a few.
We have no rush steel hook-up, there's no plumbing hook-up, which the state loves because there's no wires going across and they can't fire, uh. But it's very simple, but there is no, uh, I don't have any steel containers, so.
I just was wanting to add.
Well, yeah, that, we brought that up as a concern too for the town because it would be, uh, like, we obviously won't get robbed either.
I'm saying you would be a target, and we all have a large volume of that.
Right.
Just so you at least.
It isn't pretty secure the way that we have it. All the doors are metal.
Knock on wood, we'll never have a problem.
Container doors.
Knock on wood.
And you would really have to smash through it, and then, like I said.
But somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna do that with torches, and they're gonna see it. I mean, somebody across the street, or somebody driving by.
But, but like you said, also, you could look, you could throw, you could throw, uh, a match in there, shut the doors, and it'll make a hell of a racket, but that's not.
It's not gonna blow anything up.
This is 1.3, Class C fireworks, so they're not, nothing's gonna.
It's not tampering where they can blow a building up.
No, it's not gonna blow a building.
Alright.
And I wish we'd have brought the paper if they thought that I would've. We, we make people, when they come in, they have to sign a paper, um, taking all responsibilities for the town, for us, everybody.
They, they understand the law, they understand the rules.
And they're not terrorists, and my, I don't know, Greg, you can be aware of.
Yeah, you have to have anyone say that they were terrorists, well, uh, so.
Well, we do have a form that everybody signs. I mean, we have stacks this year. I mean, just, everybody that comes in has to sign it.
Who regulates them? Does that fall under a state procedure?
There's no regulation.
DPS, really, Public Safety.
Yep.
Fire marshal, fire marshal, really?
When we first opened, the fire marshal came in, uh, I redo the target extinguishers every other year, and it never comes in since.
Matter of fact, the one that inspected my building, my, my, he was very, very, very impressed about how the steel container with the doors, you, there's no way of getting caught. You go in, there's two steps in, two steps out. There's no way you can get caught in corners.
Oh, trapped in it.
Trapped in, there's no way. So, and if it's something happened, you just shut the doors. And he, they were very impressed with that.
Alright. So I think we wanna schedule a public hearing. Definitely want you guys to come to it, the police chief. We definitely, I think, would want the fire chief here. And anybody else that Joe or the board thinks would be a.
Because honestly, do we, honestly, we don't, I don't wanna just hop somewhere.
Yeah.
Off away. So I would, I would really rather the town vetted it, had everything out and open.
I would agree.
You know, and we're not trying to pull it fast enough, because if we do move here, I would really like to be here.
Yeah.
You know, as part of the business community.
Sure. And, and like, he said, we do donate to the fire department, but it is not, we donate because we wanna be part of the community. We don't do it to try to get away with something. We do it to be part of, like Pittsburgh, the Little League team, I, my store, I sponsor two, one or two teams a year. I just, it's, I want, we wanna be part of the community.
Alright, great. Any others, any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, Joe will be in touch with a, with a date for that.
Thanks for coming.
Thank, thank you guys very much.
And if you have feedback on that permit application, just, just let Joe know as well.
Yep.
Alright, awesome.
Alright, thank you. Um, sidewalk grant match.
So the, we need to officially, uh, put match to this grant. This is the grant that we just received for 400,000, uh, to put new sidewalks downtown Fairhaven, improve the crosswalk, and improve the crosswalks. The previous board did supply match from the Streets and Sidewalks.
So you need a motion for that?
I do need a motion for that.
We'll make a motion to use $100,000 from Streets and Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund as a match for the 400,000 dollar grant to replace the sidewalks in downtown Fairhaven.
Second. Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod. Um, authorize the grant match for sidewalks.
And it's from, tell me again, please.
Um.
Streets and Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund.
Streets and Sidewalks, thank you.
Um, discussion on that?
So it's, it's a 500,000 dollar project, and just for the record, what's the scope? Like, where, where is it starting in?
So the, the concrete's gonna start, it's gonna go up to the, to the elementary school, down that side of Main Street, all the way around, right up to the end, near, uh, the Wooden Soldier. There's some sidewalk on the other side of the road in front of Durfies, um, and in the scope of work, there's some, uh, pedestrian islands at the Park and Ride, though those won't be done with this grant because those are being done from another grant. So there will be a little bit of, uh, cash to, to play with if there's something else that could be done in terms of pedestrian, uh, infrastructure.
Is it gonna clean up those, uh, steps between terraces and the auto supply?
Frame and auto supply.
I don't know if it goes.
We said it, we said it was last year.
That, that's what I thought, Carol, like, it's one of the.
Yeah, the steps in the sidewalk are totally crumbled and missing, really.
The last grant did have that. I don't think it goes that far, but, um, with the savings we get from the, from the pedestrian islands, we could, we could add that and get those steps fixed. We would have to replace the steps with ramps. We can't have steps on the sidewalks, yeah. But yes, that could be improved.
Don't happen, but you can, that sidewalk, though, you're not, that eliminates the trees and, uh, Durfies.
Is there a tree in front of Durfies right now?
Yes.
It's where, it, it, the, the tree.
They're all overgrown.
Yeah, no, we're gonna take all the trees out.
All the trees, all the trees would come out.
Yeah.
Good question.
Alright, other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, letter of support for the street lighting grant?
Alright, still talking downtown Fairhaven, uh, this letter of support would be for the Main Street America Grant Application. That's for 35,000, it's a grant for 35,000 to add street lighting and security cameras, uh, right downtown to help with, uh, some of the vandalism we've seen. And just to improve the kind of curb area. And I would need the board to sign, and then a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to sign the letter of support for the Main Street America Street Lighting Grant.
Okay, is your second? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol to, um, support the letter, the letter of support for the street lighting grant.
Right, grant, so 35,000 dollar grant.
35,000, okay.
No, no match?
No match.
No match.
This is a private, private, it's T-Mobile who's fronting this one.
Okay, questions on the motion? Jeff, anything?
What, yeah, I, I hadn't heard that it's T-Mobile. What is a corporation like that looking to put up cameras and stuff?
No, no, it's our request to put up cameras. Um, T-Mobile is, is the one, they supply cash to, uh, Main Street America, and we're a member of Main Street America. And Main Street then facilitates.
They're a sponsor of the.
Yeah.
Jeff, did you have a question?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Joe had put in our folders, traffic ordinance edits from discussion we had at the prior meeting. Do you just want to go over that quick, Joe?
Sure, so, uh, page nine, it should be marked with the tab, uh, the only change is the, uh, section 12 to North Park Place. Uh, the addition is it shall be unlawful to park on the northerly side of North Park Place, west of North Main Street and east of Conarvan. This is to, uh, help the homeowner there, apparently the teachers are, are parking pretty tight and it's getting impossible to get in and out of that gentleman's driveway.
And also really to preserve a couple spots for the fire department when they're responding, alright?
Can I, can I add something?
Yeah, hold on just a second, was that part of the conversation too, was they were having difficulties?
I, I have talked to some firefighters who said they had a very difficult time when they responded to an emergency that there just was no spot to park be, because of the, uh, school traffic out here, yes.
My only question there was should we lay that out in there, or are emergency vehicles authorized anyways in a non-parking area? So, alright, John, go ahead.
Uh, I mean, the same token wire going in and out is updated, uh, across the streets and there.
Yeah.
We need some, out there, you know, teachers don't park down there all the time here. It's a two-hour parking area, of course. There's no two-hour parking lot, no, there could be something there. Now you got there, no, there's teachers that park there all day long.
Were we, did anyone have a conversation with the school to see if we could get the teachers parking behind the school instead of parking all day long in parking spaces that are intended for other uses?
I think we could have that conversation, but I, in my experience, like, parking lots, there's. Very normal school day, I've seen them almost back there, I don't know if there's a room for everybody back there? No, no, I don't want the, the whole, you know, space gap, but it would be a school.
To answer the question, Glenn, no, I never did get in touch with, uh, with the principal.
Even, and you know, my only point is, even if it isn't for now, I think the school owns more property back there. If, as you're doing future projects or whatever, if parking could be a piece of it, it would eliminate some of the tension and pressures that we're having out here on the Main Street.
I think the problem we run into back there is similar to there, it's all wetland, you, you really can't do much. I think all the land that the school has is developed. Unfortunately. So I mean, that was the conversation at last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if the board wants to expand on that or start with the warning process on just that currently. And that's up to you. You guys, what you want to do, or do you want to?
My, mine would be, let's solve the problem with the blocked driveway and the parking right here first.
And they want to?
Let's, and then from there, if we have, continue to have issues with the north side of the park and teachers' cars being parked there all day long, then we, I, I think we come back and revisit that and put a, a two-hour, whatever the time limit is, parking between this hour and this hour. That allows you to continue the farmer's market and, cause there's other things that we want to do on weekends and different times that we don't want to restrict people from parking.
See, the two-hour parking with all the farmer's markets, we already, right now, we have a bad fire, we don't have to replace the farmer right here. Let's all figure it out for teacher.
Alright. Glenn wants to move forward with the current, current edit.
Jeff, you had.
Jeff, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, I think, uh, moving forward, current edits are fine, um, do we need to, uh, think about the, the park and ride in terms of the ordinance as well, or do we wait until the park and ride is in process?
So the, if the.
Like the one-way would be listed, right?
So the, oh, that's interesting, so South Park, South Park Place, if you get, if the board decides to leave it two-way, will not need to make any, any adjustments to that, the one-way and the park and ride. Jeff, you know, honestly, I don't know, I don't know if you would need to mention or not, let me, uh, let me do some research into it.
We haven't even agreed upon.
Yeah.
What, what it's gonna be?
What it's gonna look like.
I, I think it's a little premature.
Alright, Jeff, you're out of order.
No, 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 it's a good question.
Park around the can.
Sounds good, sounds good.
No, I think we'll, we might have to take a look at that though when we get to that part of the project.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Alright, so is there a motion for this particular ordinance change?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, we had change ordinance for no parking, uh, between.
Wait a minute, is it an ordinance?
It's an ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, change the ordinance, uh, to make no parking between, uh, North Main and Conarvan Street.
Yeah, I would just say, edit section, section 12 to add.
Section 12, uh, add.
12B.
B.
Okay, is there a second to Glenn's motion?
Second.
Okay, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, um, I get, I'll just go through and make sure we're, so motion by Glenn was to amend the ordinance to include section 12B, um, which changes the parking between North Park Place West and North Main Street and east of Conarvan Street. It's written down.
It's written. It, it's.
How many spots?
Hmm.
Three?
Three or four?
Three or four, maybe?
Depends on what size cars, they're not, they're not marked parking, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, it's not marked parking, it depends on how they.
So I think we have a motion, we have a first and a second, questions on the motion?
The main, one of the other, uh, points was, uh, not only for him, it's hard to get out of the driveway, but just to preserve the sightlines and all determining that goes on there.
Mm-hmm, agree.
And Joe, what's the process with the amendment to the ordinance, when would it become effective?
Uh, so this will become effective October 23rd, uh, there is a 60-day, uh, warning period, it'll go in the newspaper, we have 14 days to post it in a circulated paper. Um, I'll get it in, hopefully they get it this Friday, if not, it'll be the following week. People will then have the option to petition to.
Change it or?
To change it, yeah, to change it back, or not accept it.
It's a 60-day what, waiting period?
Waiting period, basically, yeah. Okay, other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries. Uh, water abatement at 3 Grove Street, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, um, between that meeting and this meeting, Joe was able to get some information from the homeowners and at that point, I asked Joe to have, see if Carol and, um, Glenn might be able to meet with the homeowners because they weren't able to attend our meeting for, I think they had job, but they, jobs they had to be at at night, so, guess I would turn it over to Glenn and Carol, just to, we can ask questions, but they asked a lot of questions of the homeowners and kind of give a.
We met with them for probably well over an hour.
Yeah.
Right, so we did talk about a lot of.
Okay, so you just want to give an overview of what?
Yep, and, and so we, we had Tyler, Tyler and Nicole both, both came in.
Yeah.
We, we asked some questions about how long they've been there and then they, they said they, you know, three, three to four years ago, they purchased the property. Um, and, and I'm just summarizing some, they said that, asked the question of when the first problem of leaky water pipes happened, and, uh, they said that around January of 2019. Uh, at that time, one of their neighbors, uh, asked them, uh, if they knew about the water system and, uh,
The problems.
And the problems that it has, uh, there. And the whole purpose of asking that question was to understand a little bit, but also to understand, uh, how long they were aware before they got this big bill of a, of a, of a major break, um. They talked about, uh, communication problems, they, they, we, we tried to get some, some sense for, did you receive the letters, uh, that's telling you that you had a leak? Uh, and, and I didn't get away from there, they, they, uh, didn't really feel comfortable whether it was yes or no, it was, some of it was no, I don't think so.
No, they did, they said they'd never got one.
Right, um.
Yeah.
It, uh, but.
We told them it could have been in with their water bill and they weren't aware of that, but.
Um, said that they, they, they tried, they called and, again, I'm just quoting them, so don't shoot the messenger. But they, they called, uh, they said they called the town manager and never got a return call. Again, I don't, I believe, I, I, words, uh, um, uh, underground power, when it came to fixing the break, they understood that some of the issues were that there's underground power lines and they'd be very careful, but they were.
They were three, they said they were three feet away.
Yeah, and there were two or three different occasions that they brought people in to fix different breaks, they explained that, you know, a neighbor would say, I've got water in my driveway, and they, they would get someone from town here to dig it up and they, they fixed that, that portion.
The other thing I think that's important is, um, the lines are made of PVC piping, so they knew they were just gonna keep breaking, which they have, cause there's multiple, multiple joints, and it's, they said over a quarter of a mile.
PVC.
Long, mm-hmm. It wasn't, it's.
It was put in only three feet down and.
Yeah.
They had one of their neighbors, uh, came in to explain that all of the neighbors have their own wells and sewers. Uh, and, and, and their line goes through, and I thought they said more than one of a neighbor's property, I don't know how that happens, if the road must come through a couple.
Is it, is it normal that the town allows a water hookup to go through other people's properties?
They were, I asked, I asked some questions around how did that, cause I'm, I'm trying to think, how could we get permitting for that to ever happen?
Yeah, right.
Didn't really.
Obviously, they wouldn't know, cause they just bought the property.
No, and it was built, I had it written down here somewhere, but it's.
I think, remember, they were all one property to start, so when it was developed, maybe it wasn't landlocked like so, or, or so cut off.
Okay.
Yeah, I think one person owned it all and started selling.
Yeah.
Lots, and then when you had land in the back, it had to be something that the road that went through and the line that went with it.
Jeff, was that one of the first houses in the back there or not?
It was.
I'm not sure, but I, I think it was one of the early ones. So I think, I think the line ran across the, the guy's own property, then when you start subdividing, it just gets messier, that's all.
It's 1985, so.
1985.
Yeah.
When asked, I said, okay, you, so, it sounds like you were aware you had a piping, a water problem that was leaking. Uh, what, what's your, you know, what's, what's your solution, they said, well, they want, they want to put a well in. What was, I, it caught me by a little bit of surprise when they would, they, they seemed concerned that they would get sued by the state and/or the town if they unhooked and had a well, so they didn't put a well in before now, and I, and don't, uh, uh, and so we're talking, saying, well, wait a minute, what do you? Okay, under, again, just trying to understand why the, the problem of, with, we've got a leaky water, why we didn't either do the, do the line properly or put a well in, uh, one, one or the other.
But they can't do the line properly, because they can't go across their neighbors, they can't get rice away. That's what was discussed.
That's what they.
Came to a better solution, I think.
Right, so then, so then when we, when we talked to them, I said, so what do you, at the end of the day, what are you looking? She says, well, I just want my, our, our water bill to be an average of what it was. I'm going, okay, uh, but.
I'm sorry, but before that, when we were talking about the well, um, and they're gonna, they're gonna unhook, no, they're not gonna unhook.
They're just gonna turn it off.
They're gonna turn it off, so nothing will be changed, but you can bypass it that way by turning it off, you could turn it back on at any other time. But they'll have a well and they won't be.
So they would put a well in.
And turn, turn off.
Turn off the water.
Underneath, yeah.
They'll still pay the base charge.
Leave it, leave, don't uncouple, and what, what they're saying is, and we're talking, we're just talking, what kind of solutions can you have here? And they said, well, so we won't get in trouble with the state, don't, don't unhook, just turn, what we, what we've been talking about right along is turning your water off, therefore the water stops running, stops leaking, we stop wasting the water, and you're gonna put a well in.
So.
Yeah.
They know that, yeah.
Jeff?
Um, so to, uh, there, you can't have a cross connection between the, the town's water and, and their house, so there either needs to be, I think there needs to be a physical disconnect or a backflow, um, Joe and, and Aaron will know more about that. And then, obviously, the base rate would still continue, I think.
Yes. Yes to both of those things, Jeff, they can't, they can't connect to our system with their well.
That's correct.
It sounds like they don't, they want to dis, disconnect, they want to turn off the, uh.
They just want it turned, they, they don't want to turn off their water because. Huh? I, under.
He's just telling what they want to do.
No, they, they, right, they're just saying, here's, what's the solution, they want a well, they want nothing to do with our water line going in and anything, they, they, they feel they, they got, uh, uh, didn't know what they got into until after.
Got hosed.
Absolutely, and so, and they're just saying, okay, just wanna, we, we know that we want to put a well in and, and we, we don't want anymore, being charged for any more water, we, go ahead, turn it off. Um, owners will put a, I, I put, made an action plan that says, uh, the line turned off, or the water just shut off, that's what we're, we're, we're talking about doing anyway, the lack of payment. Uh, owners will put in a well, they, they know they have to get it, they have to go through permitting branch, water payment agreement. Again, they wanted, uh, half the amount. Uh, I, go, right now, when we have an agreement, uh, I guess our past agreements have only been for six months. I, but you can only have one every 12 months. Some of the thought processes, would, would we, uh, let them have a water agreement because they're putting a well in and turning it off? Give them the 12 months, uh, instead of six months to try to get the, the payments, there's a lot of, I think $6,000 or something, that, the, the payments would be pretty high to make the payments a little more manageable.
It's 6,751, so it's a lot.
Also put another, uh, in the action plan is saying, hey, can any of this shoot, try to help and see if we can facilitate them, seeing if they're eligible for any of the, uh, water bills from, from that COVID relief program, to see if we can take their exposure that they'd have to pay for and bring it down there. Um, just want to come back. Ask them when they made their last water payment. And I was told that they're.
You asked them what?
When they made their last water payment. And, uh, and they said they're up to date, except for the last bill. Is the last bill the last quarter or multiple quarters, it seems like a lot of.
So the, the last water charge was billed on 5/5 and that is in fact the last, the last time they would bill?
Cause they said they've been making every, I wanted to get a sense of, with, did they get this high amount because they didn't pay quarter after quarter after quarter and were just here from? And they're saying, no, this is the last, not the one that we just got in our mail today, but this is the last bill, they're up to date. So that means that that leaky water, that was, I tell you again about that, it almost looked like there was certain amount of wasted water they were willing to accept. Knowing them, but there was this big break that happened and, and next to last quarter, and this huge bill of $6,000 in the, uh, that came. That one hasn't been paid, and what they're saying is, turn it on, would like you to charge with the average that, that I've done for X amount of time, I'm, I'm still trying to get my mind around if you're fixed, cause when I look at the water ordinance, that's part of the packet, to say, what, what are the rules? Well, they, they say that, that you're responsible from, for your line, for the maintenance and upkeep. Two thousand nineteen, you knew you had bad piping, you knew you had a problem. Your plan, your fix was, as long as it doesn't get too expensive, I'm gonna live with the problem. I might be over summarizing, but I think I'm pretty close. Well, unfortunately, back in the quarter before this last one, there was a major break and they didn't figure it out until thousands of dollars of lost water. I feel for them, but I'm looking back going, the responsibility and knowing that, that you had a problem. I'm having hard times. That's just me. Um, I asked them, has Joe offered a payment plan for you to pay for the water that you, that you use? And they said yes. So there has been, because I, I got the sense that the communication wasn't that great between us as a town and them, for whatever reason, but that part, we, we were pretty good on.
You said there's a, a more recent bill? Was that a?
Came out today.
Well, it just came out today.
That must look pretty bad.
I haven't seen it.
It'd be the same.
Well.
It hasn't been fixed?
I, I thought that, didn't they bring someone in and fix?
Well, that's great. It, it didn't come way down, so when they fixed it.
My, my, my understanding is, they, their approach was, we know we're losing a little water, we'll pay it. It's cheaper than putting the new line and fighting with the state to put a well in. They had this major break payment before last, and once that major break, because there was enough water there at, when they, when they found out, they got someone in and fixed it. And they went back to the trickle, losing a little bit of water through the, the little lines, so they backed normal. So that's.
Kind of the.
That's, I don't know if you had anything else on that, but that's what we came up with.
That's it. And when you look at that against the policy, there's, it's, we don't have a lot of options. I mean, I feel we both, all felt terrible for them. I mean, it's a bad situation. They got taken advantage of, but, um, they don't think they'll get their well into October.
Oh, so they have a permit?
That's what they said.
My understanding was they had with the well, so the permitting and stuff is.
I mean, if, if, I guess if they don't have a permit, they, the, the drillers won't drill.
So what's the, what's the ordinance saying on wells on? So like I could disconnect and only pay the base rate and put a well in my backyard?
No, there's a distance.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be engineered.
So because they have a large area down there, they, they would be able to? Yeah, I know, I know where it is.
I, I mean, I think they're a good candidate for a, a permit. I mean, if they don't have rights of way, then I don't think the state really has, as long as they have the room to put in a well, uh, the state cannot reasonably.
It's interesting that the neighbors don't have any problem with fixing the leaks, but won't let them just dig a new line quick?
That's.
Didn't really get into all that, ask them about their.
Right, didn't, didn't go there. I, I still come back to in our water ordinance, Article Six, uh, where the owner's responsible for the, you know, any repairs and breaks in the line. You're responsible for the main into your line.
The neighbors have, I mean, doesn't have much to do with it, but they've been really great neighbors. They've all worked together on it, um, more than one household, but this is what they're left with, and so they've got to fix it.
The only other question I had, and I don't know if Joe knows, but, you know, back in nineteen eighty-five, where they went through the subdivision process, shouldn't the town have made sure right of ways and all that stuff was in order? Water rights were in order, all that stuff was, I'm asking Joe, John.
Um.
It's, just a question.
Obviously, you weren't here.
No, I was. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to just think.
If you were doing a subdivision now, would you make sure all those are in order or is that up for the landowner to take care of?
Yep. I, subdivisions, I do believe, and Chris, you might know better than me, that also has to go through the state. Um, and for right of ways, it, it would be a matter of, of even knowing if one's there, so he might have just, a, a landowner could easily say, yeah, this is your property now, and not even mention about the water line. So, um, if the town didn't know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't.
No, no, I. Back in eighty-five, or up until what, the last, ten years ago?
Yep.
The, the ten acre loophole was in effect.
Gotcha, yeah.
So the, the subdivisions were very much laxadaisical, if you meant certain guidelines. It's only been recent that, uh, the state has put a clamp on, uh, on the subdivisions.
All right. So I think what we're.
You would think, one would think that the, the town.
Yeah.
Through the permitting process would have a, 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 a certain amount of responsibility to make sure that rights of way and, uh, are established.
Yeah.
So the, one of the questions after talking with them and knowing it's around the October timeframe before they can get their well in.
Yeah.
It's the one of where what got us here to begin with of saying, okay, the, uh, got this high payment, hasn't been paid. Do you turn the water off or not? Now, my understanding from the meeting we're with, they turn the water off is okay, but I, if it's.
In October.
In October is when you'd want to, I mean, I, there's a, there's a couple, there's a couple different things here. One of them, I'm still not, not at a place where I'm feeling that we take anything away from the six thousand. But I do believe we should do the things like, uh, trying to give them an agreement. And when I looked at the agreement document, uh, to say, okay, at least I can come back and say, because it's within twelve months, even though we do it for six months, you're not eligible for, for another one until twelve. Even if that, when we get to that ordinance, we, we, that, that agreement or anything, you rewrite it and make it twelve months for everyone. Because if you're not eligible, you might as well, I, I don't know what the logic with six months.
The bill, um, as it stands now is six thousand eight hundred eighty-nine, and we did talk about removing the, the fees that are on there, which comes to a total of a hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Yep.
And if you decide to do that, then the total amount due is six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one.
What we're looking for is to take the penalties and say, we get it, we understand it, uh, here, we'll take no penalty fees. But I, when I, I come back to some past decisions we've made just in the past year, us, with the information I have in front of me, taking and, and taking thousands of dollars away from that right there, I don't, it wouldn't be consistent with the decisions we've made.
I mean, it is a unique circumstance. I don't think we've run into this before.
Have another one.
I don't think we have. I mean, I would be fine with Glenn's, I think, recommendation of a twelve month payment plan for the sixty-seven fifty-one. I don't know what others are thinking, and then hopefully they can get their permit through the state and.
And, and I'd want to leave their water, if, that's what they, leave their water on until October when they're welling in.
Yeah, we don't want to shut their water off.
And also, but applying for, trying, and I have no idea what the rules are for, and I, I haven't worked with anyone to, just even looked at that to say, is there, is there any way that, that some, there's some COVID money that can, because, and the logic being that they knew about their leak in two thousand nineteen and, and.
Well, they didn't know about this leak.
But, but we had COVID happen in twenty twenty, even if you, I don't even know if they could have got a well or got, what was going on?
Twenty, yeah, probably couldn't get a well.
To get it, to get it fixed. So I, I gotta believe you can build a pretty strong case of, of, there's, this bill is here and so high because as a result of the COVID, we couldn't get in and, and solve the problem.
Can, can we slash you, Joe, give them any help with applying for?
Yeah, they have to do the application, as I understand it.
Yeah, it's an online application.
But you could show them where to find it and.
Sure, sure. And, and it's pretty easy. They just have to put in some numbers and then the, the state sends it to us. Yeah.
Question, I think I heard, that, that subject's done. Uh, I think I heard that the neighbors are on their own well in Septic?
All, all the neighbors are on their own well in Septic. It's the only one with town water in that group.
Okay. So.
None of them, uh, none of them have town water.
Okay. So how do you justify continuing to, to hitting them with a base rate if you're not hitting all the neighbors with the same base rate?
That's, I, I heard.
Are, are we sure, are we sure that, is that, that, I mean, that branch new water line goes down prospect there?
I, I'm not, all I know is the one neighbor who came in with them, and that's what they said was all the, and these are the neighbors that share, I think they, they talked about, one, two, there were three families?
More than that.
But they, they, that the line, that this water line went through, every one of the people that this water line went through has their own well and sewer. None of them has town water.
Well, these people have their own sewer.
That's correct.
Yeah. Uh, they, they, back in ninety-eighty-five, whoever owned it opted for town water. They may have had a well and it had failed and rather than, uh, put a new well in.
We didn't talk about any base rate, though.
Well, what I heard was.
I know.
No, I, I heard that here, but I didn't talk base rate either. But we were talking, turn it off, as a matter of fact, take the meter that's down there, because the meter is just gonna freeze up, take the meter and bring it back to, to the water, water plant. We just turn it off and we take our meter and we're done.
Okay, but I heard someone say.
I don't know if it was me, I might have.
But I would, I wouldn't be charging them that.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, I, again.
I don't think it's fair to charge them.
Yeah, that's what I was.
That, that it wouldn't, wouldn't be right, charge them.
Jeff, go ahead.
The ordinance is very clear about, uh, what the rule is for that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have it in front of you, but there, there's like a footage or something from the, from the water line.
To the dwelling?
Yeah.
I have it right here, but.
But I thought it.
Okay.
From the, where, where you can connect to where the house is located.
Okay.
It's, it's like mandatory that you pay the base rate if you're within some number of feet of the line, whether you're hooked up or not.
The, the neighbors that are between them and the line that are closer.
Never hooked up.
And, and never, never hooked up, then, and they're not paying a base rate, they may have gotten sucked in under the bus wheels. If we're gonna quote the, the ordinance, we gotta be consistent, as we've discussed.
Again, I'm not proposing we charge them the base rate when we turn off and take.
From what Jeff just said was, if the ordinance says if there's a minimum, then some of the neighbors may have, have to get charged.
I go back and say.
I think that's another issue.
That's another issue altogether, because I go back and say, if you've been doing it since nineteen eighty-five, Rusta all of a sudden.
So is there a motion from Glenn, maybe?
Yes, are you looking for a motion? I, I, there's a lot they had there. I want to make a motion that, because what this all started was, there, they asked to appeal the six thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollar and seventy-four cent bill.
Yeah.
Uh, and they, what they wanted, instead of paying that, was to pay what their normal.
Average.
Quarterly bill, which was about three hundred and sixty dollars or so, in that range. I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, by, by policy, that we deny their appeal.
Start.
And we also will turn, we will turn off the water.
When they, when they.
They're putting a well in.
Yeah.
Uh, owners are putting a well in. We will, Joe will talk to them about a payment agreement. Can I put in the motion to twelve months, which is an exception to the.
Given the circumstances?
Given the circumstances, we, we're gonna go with twelve months. And also encourage them to apply for COVID, uh, relief money to help cover a large chunk of, it's really the difference between what a normal payment would be is what I'd be asking if I was putting that application together. Uh, and just what they're asking, but be, be trying to get the money from the COVID relief.
For the amount of six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Claire, do you have that motion?
How, how? I will have by tomorrow afternoon.
All right.
No, uh.
Do you just want to run through it?
Deny the appeal to average the bill.
That's correct.
That's right.
Yeah.
And given the circumstance, they are entitled to a twelve month payment agreement.
They're being offered.
Offered.
They'll be offered, they're gonna be offered a twelve month payment agreement.
A twelve month.
For the amount of six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one? I don't think we need to.
Six thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-one cent or seventy-four cents?
No, the fees are being dropped.
And the fees, and the fees, any late or penalty fees are going to be.
Leaving.
I don't, right, yeah.
So that will leave how much?
Six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars.
No, no, the wage fees are.
One thirty-eight.
A hundred and thirty-eight.
We don't have to have all that in the motion, do we?
And Joe, the, the part about COVID doesn't need to be.
No.
Joe can just have that conversation.
And then Joe will help them apply for.
No, that does, we retract.
Doesn't need to be in the motion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Sure.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol, for the motion that Claire wrote down there.
And again, just for the record, I mean, we had a lot of empathy for them, and, um, we're just sorry that it happened. I don't mean it is in the water leak, I mean that they were taken advantage of and, um, it's too bad.
All right, um, other questions on the motion? Jeff, anything from you?
Kurt, were the ordinance that, uh, to shut off is, is still, uh, Joe?
Were the ordinance, there were, I mean, they would be requested. Yes.
I think they're gonna have to request that from Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, which they've already done.
Okay.
Okay.
Which is separate from this?
I think so.
But contingent?
Yes.
It sound, it sounds like Glenn's motion is kind of, uh, contingent on it to shut off in October.
That's.
Or not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No.
No.
It's when the well is.
It's, see, it's really, they may decide when Joe talks to them that they want it shut off tomorrow. That they don't want continuing to leak and waste water in the broken line.
Okay.
That, that's the reason I was kind of vague on that, Jeff.
Okay.
I think there's a motion, Jeff, for the board's action, but I also think there's action that the town manager is gonna have to take with his discretion on how he's gonna handle it. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Thank you guys for reaching out. Uh, new business, review and edit of the EDC bylaws?
The, the board, excuse me, the board approved the town manager to be a ex officio member um, a few meetings ago, but it was, it was not yet in the, um, bylaws. So we're just, we're updating the bylaws to include, um, what the Board of Selectmen have chosen to do. So I would just need a, uh, motion and a couple of signatures, um, and this would be approved.
And you're gonna be a what?
Ex officio, uh, member of the.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
I need some, see, I'm the chair of the board, I, I'd like someone else to make a motion.
Oh, that's true. Glenn can. Rod, do you want to make the motion?
If we knew what it was?
Yeah, if I did.
You want to edit these?
Here. All they're doing is adding this.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
From previous.
Okay.
Previous approval, but now it's in writing in the, basically their ground rules for their committee. Jeff, you want to?
Takes a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Thank you, Jeff.
That was really powerful.
I was gonna do that, but I knew that that wasn't the right thing to do.
To approve the change.
So Jeff's motion was to approve the Economic Development Committee's bylaws with the change to allow the town manager to vote as an ex officio member.
That's what he said.
That was seconded by Rod. Right? Is that what you meant, Jeff?
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, uh, questions on that? Basically just putting into writing what some of the past decisions were.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I just.
Rod?
I just wonder why it needed to be.
Board approved.
Board approval.
The bylaws were board approved when the.
Originally.
It was originally put together, so we had.
Oh, okay.
Come back to that. Uh, budget prep? Joe, did you wanna just give an overview of that?
So this is the first time I've done this, uh, for any, uh, select board in my career, but I thought maybe this would help us move the budget process down the line a little faster. Um, typically what I've experienced is, uh, my staff will put together a budget, we'll guess about what percentage the board wants. Uh, then we'll bring the budget to the board and then the board will decide, we're gonna cut this, we're gonna cut that, I wanted this percentage, not that percentage. Um, what I'm asking the board tonight is for a little bit of guidance before we get, you know, halfway into the budget process. Um, can the board let myself and the staff know, um, what the stomach is for percent increases? Are we looking for a two percent increase? Are you looking for a reduction, uh, something flat? To give us some kind of guidance instead of us just throwing stuff at the board and then you guys coming in and spending two months, you know, kinda butchering what, all the work that we've just done. It, it doesn't make sense for me to, to do it the way we've done it. Um, so I'm looking for.
I, I guess I would counter.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I would ca, I would counter with, uh, present a budget that we can't fill calls in. So, but there just aren't any questions. I mean, it's justified. Wouldn't get there.
I, the, the response is. So the response, my response to that is.
But you do, you do a pretty good job, Jeff.
If, I think I do okay, but it, it never comes down to that though. It's the first thing I imagine we do when we see our packets for the first time. We take it and we flip it to the last page and look saying, that's a three percent increase. We're not doing that.
I can, let me, let me give you some specific instruction that I would like to see in it.
Yes.
And that is if the paying increases are two and a half percent, I want you to go to each of your departments and tell them to put a budget together with no more. You can be less, you can have a flat budget and I'll be tickled to death, but no more than two and a half percent. That's your first pass. We may need to come in after depending on stuff and, and, and you, and you may have individual department heads come in and build a very good case with us that they should be two point eight percent, and here's the reason, here's the, the reason why. But I, I would be very disappointed if someone comes in and, and I see, um, departments with budgets much greater than two and a half percent. That's just me.
And that kinda goes into the water sewer budget, when we had that conversation about, you know, you presented that budget, but you really had to cut the, the future investment savings to get to the point where you're at. And then we, I think ended up reversing it, putting the money back in, so.
My issue with saying two and a half percent is that, and this is just human nature, it could be flat, it could be less, but oh gosh, we got a target of two and a half percent. So what else can we put in here? So. I don't know if, you know, to, to shoot for a flat budget is probably unrealistic, but maybe anything more than whatever percent we decide has to have a, a real reason that they can stand behind. Not the what-ifs, what if something happens and, you know, there's too many what-ifs.
You can what-if anything to death, yes.
I guess my take is some, some departments have gotten a lot of new equipment that should, should, we should start seeing the savings of that new equipment. Okay, by the same token. It was unnerving to me right after the budget started this year, this current budget, we get hit with tires that are completely visible that obviously weren't looked at during the budget process. So. It, it's a double-edged sword. I don't wanna get hit. I don't think the board should be hit with, uh, these. We need emergency funds because we didn't anticipate, and I'm gonna beat on the tires for a minute. We didn't anticipate, anticipate that the tractor needed tires because we didn't go down and look at them and see that they were cracked three, four months ago or five months ago. Okay, but on the same token, we got all this new equipment. We oughta, there ought to be savings on equipment maintenance as well as, uh, we should be doing more of the work, not farming out so much. Those are potential savings. I wanna see that kinda savings. I, I, you know, I, I wanna see those kinds of steps being considered, okay? And there may be a downstream, you know, but to do that, I need this kinda, this widget over here that, you know. I wanna see a thoughtful budget. I'm not saying that the budgets in the past were not thoughtful, I'm just saying, okay, we've got all these new amenities. Let's figure out a way to use, to, to leverage them the best way we can to sit, to, to have an efficient budget. Okay, so I'm not willing to, to give a, a target. I wanna see a thoughtful budget. And if that thoughtful budget is three and a half percent, but we're gonna get so much more for that three and a half percent. Um, I might be willing to accept three and a half percent because we're gonna get, you know, more this, more that, you know.
Alright.
And I use three and a half percent. I'd rather it be one and a half percent.
That's good. That's still, three and a half's pretty high.
No, I, I'm, I'm just, I was throwing numbers out. I'm just saying that, that's, the two, two-plus percent, uh, is, you, you're based upon salaries. Okay, the salary line item, but there are so many other aspects of this budget than salary that's, uh.
Salary's the easy part, really.
Yes, it is.
Just, just looking for a ballpark when I say two and a half. I've sat here and looked at.
I understand.
Three different budgets, but I, they, they always start high and we, uh, uh, and seem inflated that we, and we, we always work them on down. I'm a little, to give you more information right now, I would have liked to have seen the end-of-year numbers that, where we are. Where did we come in? Where did we go over budget? Where were, I, I can't sit here and tell you if we were good or not good.
On last year's budget.
On last year's budget. So it's hard for me to sit and give you.
It's premature. It's got to be.
But I'm, but it's. It, it's, it's one where.
We, we face that every year.
Uh, so, so to give you very specifics to tell you that I'm, I'm looking in, in different places, no, but I do believe, uh, that we're still in tough times, just like we were last year when we budgeted. It's not going to be, we, we just saw the, the rise in our, uh, water and sewer, and the bills that just went out. I, uh, anything we can do to keep that budget as low as we possibly can, I think we. We need to, to do it. I wouldn't, now is not the time. I would be thinking austerity, uh, and, and doing different things. Hot DPW, for example, though, if I'm pushed for, for what specifically, when DPW, I don't wanna see them come in asking for new tractor, new mower. Heck, I, I, I mean, that's, I, I, I'd wanna see an option of what it's gonna take for us to, I could probably hire it done. Or, uh, what we spent this year and how, how long I could mow, roadside mow for, uh, using a rental approach. Uh, there's, there's some things I, I sit back here in just the short amount of time I've been on the board and watch some of this new equipment. And I'm as disappointed as anyone that the whole reason we bought it was for us to do stuff.
For efficiencies.
And we don't, I haven't seen efficiencies.
We're not leveraging.
Come out of them yet, so we've got some work ahead of us.
We do.
And on top of that, I'll say it for the hundredth time, they, DPW, for example, could submit with the budget the items that they see coming down, whatever you wanna do, the next eight years, we're gonna need, we estimate in five years, we're gonna need this big piece of equipment or whatever. So it's not always a shock. What are, I mean, the tires again, that shouldn't have been a surprise. So if they can attach anything with a plan, a capital plan for the next, whatever hunk of time you want it to be.
We have gotten a, a capital plan, uh, it, it's gotta be readdressed.
It's not, it's not a living document.
No, it's not.
You know?
Aaron, we talked yesterday about it, yeah, we're gonna revamp that to.
Yeah.
To, to kinda rework it and, and plan that out, because some equipment maybe doesn't need to be replaced as soon as.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, that's coming. And, um, Carol, I know you've asked for, okay, I'm off topic, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, you've asked for timelines for all the projects. I just, I've, I've tried to put this into an Excel spreadsheet and it looks like, it looks bad. So I'm, I'm looking at a program where something like, um, uh, Microsoft that will actually build a, a timeline for me. I haven't forgot about you, I just haven't found a, a cheap way to do it.
Chris will do it for you.
Thanks, Chris.
But that, but that said, thanks for asking about the budget and how to plan. I get it.
I think that's good feedback, I mean.
Yes, um.
May not be what you want to hear.
It was different feedback, but I think it's.
Farm out mowing, but we wanna do, we wanna do it all into, no, I'll bring something that. I just, I, I don't like to spend hours and hours beating something up when we could in the beginning not do.
Yeah.
So, um, yes, thank you, we'll, we'll cash it out.
Alright, thank you. Um, appointment to the zoning board of adjustment?
Yes, um, there is a, an alternate position on the zoning board of adjustment, and Ms. Roseanne Van Lou, um, said she would be interested in holding that position.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would just need a motion from the board.
And, and the zoning board is already, they, they know that they've got somebody, so I'm, I'm still getting comfortable with the, what's the vetting process? If it's just raise your hand and, and you'll get put in, uh, I'm saying, seems like we could do a little better with the vetting process. Uh, at a minimum, that, did the zoning board know that there's a new individual? Have they talked to that new individual so they understand what the, what the jobs, expectation, what they're gonna do?
Yeah, so the zoning board administrator, uh, Phil has talked to her, and the chair of the board actually recommended her to us for this.
So, so they're good with it?
They're, yeah, yeah, they're, everybody's on board.
So we had a motion by Rod, I think.
Carol seconded it.
Carol seconded it to appoint, uh, Rose, Rose, right?
Roseanne Van Lou.
Roseanne Van Lou.
Mm-hmm.
As an alternate to the zoning board of adjustment.
That's a, a three-year.
Three-year term.
For a three-year term. Uh, questions on that? Jeff, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, that motion carries. Uh, policy review, Joe?
It's pretty old, it was on a typewriter.
Yeah. So, and this is exactly why we're doing this, um, this policy, uh, Fair Havens American with Disabilities Grievance Procedure, um, is actually obsolete. I, I asked VLCT to take a look at it to see if it was, um, if they could update it for us, and they said we no longer need this. Um, there are no more grievance, the, the grievance committee panels don't exist. We're just expected to follow this federal law. So we can actually just, uh, eliminate this policy.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to eliminate the American Disabilities Grievance Procedure because it's become obsolete since its creation.
Okay, is there a second? Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod. Any questions on the motion?
Uh, just, they, they actually said we can make, just mark this as obsolete and do away with it?
Yes.
Rather than just.
They said the.
Re, you know, uh, type in, uh, a change that says we will follow the rules according to X, Y, Z. Ordin, uh, yes, uh, state and federal laws.
Yeah, no, she said in, uh, in two places, this policy is no longer needed, and in the first, uh, her initial, the initial blust, she says the ADA amendments a number of years ago may negate the need for the town to have this grievance, grievance process.
Procedure, yeah, not, not the policy.
Well.
Well, yeah, but the, this is about the grievance procedure and there is no such thing any longer, so just get rid of it.
Cause you still have under ADA the ability to grieve.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Anything for the parking lot?
Who seconded that?
Uh, Rod did.
No, I, I moved, Carol was seconding.
Get confused. Nothing for parking lot? Okay. Um, board roundtable? Anything from board members?
Not me.
I had one person, uh, just brought up a, a safety concern and they, they talked about, I'm glad that you're still here, because they, they talked about Brown's Corner. Now they have that flashing yellow light that's so good when you, cause you can't see traffic come over the hill. And they're saying down here, when you come over the, the tracks, if you're coming from where the outlet is and you're sitting there, they, they, they're right there before you know it. Uh, that, uh, could, would a flashing light sometime of, to let you know that there's a vehicle coming?
Somewhere in my last two years, that's what Ben talked about, vetted through the state, I don't know which county. Has been brought up, so I just recommend maybe look in your files, might have heard, uh, with the most people. But it was talked about, it was on the board then, it was pretty similar, like it would have to go through the traffic safety special status.
I, I was wondering if the trans and.
But as Ben talked about, I don't know whatever came along, I don't do it.
So it could be on file?
Saying that I, I was proposing of that, I'd really like to look at Brown's and I agree with you. Tell if there's a car coming.
Right, let, let you know when's coming, you know, before you.
Okay, anything, anything else, though?
Nope, that's it.
Jeff, anything?
Uh, um, nothing significantly. I just was hoping that the, like, when we do end up with a, that we could make our capital plan more comprehensive. So all the, eventually, you know, water lines and, and, uh, paving schedule and culverts all, all go together in that plan, along with equipment. So that it's just, um, we don't, we don't double back on ourselves and say, oh, we paved that, we built that sidewalk, now we're gonna dig it all up for the water line. Uh, just a little, you know, foresight there.
Okay.
And, and we're slowly working towards that, so that's good.
Alright, anything else?
Nothing.
Okay, so Jeff can't do the expenditure revenue reports, I don't think?
Uh.
You have them?
Okay.
Alright.
I can.
Go ahead if you have it.
Uh, motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents?
Second.
A motion by Jeff for authorize the payroll warrant, seconded by Glenn. Is he right?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, he is.
I just.
Made me worry. I sent that to him.
I guessed.
You guessed that? Good job. Uh, question, questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries.
Uh, this one, this one's a little scarier, uh, motion to pay the general fund warrant, one million, sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. And that includes the first two payments of the wastewater treatment facility. And that is what, nine hundred thousand and change, Joe?
Nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and five is the combination of those two payments.
Oh, I had nine oh five.
Oh, five?
Nine hundred five thousand, forty-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
Yeah, okay, but then, but then there's the wastewater treatment facility study.
Oh, different, yeah, different, that's.
It's a different.
That's a different one, yeah.
But it's, but it's the two wastewater bills.
Those are the two wastewater.
Yep.
Alright.
Second there?
Uh, motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn for the general fund warrant. Um, any other questions on the?
Yeah, how's this gonna get paid? Do we have, is this part of this, this grant, right?
Uh, part of its grant, right now, um, we have to move through, what the state does is they make us get interim financing. So this nine hundred and five thousand dollars, um, is actually coming from the bank. They're gonna drop that money into our bank account. And then the bond will take over and then half of this, the bond will be forgiven as a grant. And then the bond will take over, and then half of this, the bond will be forgiven as a grant. Once we get to substantial completion.
Okay. Other questions?
Well, should I be concerned, Joe, that the checking account is lower than the $1,064?
That's why I just asked.
Oh, no, you're okay, Jeff.
Okay.
The, the bank is sending us money.
Okay. Oh, I assume that was already in there?
No, it'll, it'll hit in the morning.
Do you get it?
Your, your checking account wouldn't look right next time if, if we subtracted it out this time. The numbers are correct.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Uh, checkbook status, Jeff?
So, Joe, tomorrow, how much money is gonna be added from the, it, I, it doesn't work like that, don't worry about it.
Your, your, your checkbook in the morning will look like that number you just read.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, um, executive session?
Like to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel for 1VSA 313A3.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yeah, the motion carries.